It's six o'clock, we call the November twenty twenty five meeting of the Town Council of Pendleton to order, and we'll pause for a moment of silent reflection. Rise and do pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks. Willie, will you lead us in a roll call on determination of quorum?
Be glad to. Steve Danny here, Shane Davis here, Jerry Burmeister here, Brian Williams here, Marissa Skaggs.
Here. Five out of five members, we have established that there is a quorum. Before we move on to the approval of minutes of the September twenty twenty five meet, actually the October minutes of the October meeting of twenty twenty five. I'd like for us to recognize a very special ninetieth birthday that we have in the audience with this Mr. Garder, turn ninety. Thank you for spending it with us, your Town Council.
I think we have a muffin in the back.
Yeah. There's no cape, but we send you well wishes on your ninetieth birthday, so thank you for being here. Okay, moving on to the approval of the minutes. Does anybody have any questions, comments, concerns regarding those October ninth twenty twenty five meeting minutes? Is there, oh, go ahead.
I make a motion except the minutes.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for approval of the October twenty twenty five minutes. All in favor signify by saying aye, aye, oppose, motion carried unanimously. Okay, quick treasures report, Willie.
Okay, you've got the voucher registry, you see there. The only thing that probably sticks out is we bought a back truck this month and I think it was a good purchase and we're gonna put it to good use. Other than that, just the normal, if you look at the month ending October, you see our general fund's in good shape, don't tell Scott, but.
Any questions for Willie regarding the quick treasure report or the claims as presented? If there aren't any questions, I will entertain a motion for approval of the claims.
I'm making a motion.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the approval of claims for the October twenty twenty five, all in favor signify by saying aye, aye, oppose, motion carried unanimously. Great, I don't believe the chief R is online, and he was feeling a little unwell today, so we will skip, I mean, we have it in the Google Drive, his report. But we will move on to the park. And Sherri.
Good evening. I'll just go through a few highlights that are on there. We've been busy with some ribbon cutties this past month, a lot of fun with those. For our Barnhart playgrounds, we anticipated, we hoped we'd get a lot of kiddos to come out. Unfortunately, we didn't plan that well, it was grandparents' night at the schools. So we had about thirty adults show up, which ended up being really cool. We had them playing on the playground and the equipment. It was a lot of fun, so it was a great evening. Pickleball courts, grand opening was also successful, thank you Marissa for taking pictures for me last minute. But it was a great event as well. We are gonna host our first tournament, pickleball tournament, May second twenty twenty six, and we're really excited to see how that comes together. That's gonna be a fundraiser for the community foundations, Bright Future Grant. And it'll also help us to figure out how to hold those tournaments in the future, so that it can be a little bit of a revenue source for us, help with maintenance of the pickleball courts in that area, so we're excited about that. Golf course is going well, we had a little hiccup with snow this week, but slowed things down a bit, but we're back up and running. And Friday and Saturday looked pretty full, so we're excited about the weekend coming with that. Indiana Parks and Recreation Association has an annual conference, I just got back from that today. That's a three day conference, meeting great Parks and Rec folks from all over the state of Indiana. So I made some great connections with other directors, went to some pretty cool sessions on budgeting and revenue, you can call that cool, but I think it is. We also had some ArcGS mapping classes, which are great for the invasive management initiative we'd like to start looking into for the park in the future. And they had a really cool session called Parks and Rex, which meant Rex as in accidents. And it was an hour of adults sitting around and talking about our mishaps and the things that go wrong in parks, and it was wonderful. Made us all feel really good about ourselves.
Not the only ones, right?
No, so it was a good event, walked away with some good information and some good contacts. Donnie also attended yesterday. He did the all day playground maintenance course, so he is now playground certified. And that is for an understanding of basic playground hazards, applying safe maintenance practices on equipment, identifying surfacing types and proper maintenance procedures, and establishing proper record keeping practices, so we're excited for Donnie to have that under his belt. And last but not least, there's a red carpet premiere of Now Entering Pendleton that's happening on November twentieth at seven PM at the middle school. This was a group of Fall State media students who came in and they created a movie, and they talked to different individuals within in Pendleton, I had the honor of representing the park along with Ron Barnhart. So hope you guys can make it out to see the premiere of that, and that's it for me.
Any questions for Sherri?
I went to the playground dedication, great day, great time. You know.
Did you be a kid again, right?
And how cool that you're gonna do the pickleball tournament to benefit the Bright Futures Grant Fund when that is what partially granted that project, like a lot of pay it forward, like full circle moment, that's so cool.
When, when can we sign up for that, just in May, like is there?
There will be some Facebook stuff coming out and more information as the year gets started, yeah.
I'm gonna try, it's gonna be good.
Awesome, anything else for Sherri? Okay, awesome, thanks Sherri. Okay, moving on to the planning department.
All right, so this evening you will hear our comprehensive plan and downtown plan, potential adoption. We had a public hearing in October for the comp plan, and then we had one in November for the downtown plan. So we are ready to get those in place, we've worked really hard, the consultants worked really hard, the public has also worked just as hard, and we are very excited about both of these being updated. Yep, keep going. Our I sixty nine master plan, which will be a appendage of that comprehensive plan. We had a meeting on the twenty eighth of October, it was very productive, it was with both our steering committee, and then we opened it for a second meeting that day for our focus group members. Again, a lot of positive feedback, a lot of good comments, and I think we have a really good solid plan amendment we can make to the I sixty nine plan, specifically on the west side. Thanks, thank you. So this is a Indiana Department of Health Bike Pedestrian Master Plan grant we are gonna be going for, it's due tomorrow. So Connor, Denise and myself have been working on this for about two weeks. It's nowhere nearly as extensive as Okra, and we have a really good shot at getting it, so it would be twenty thousand dollars to update our bike pedestrian master plan, that one was from twenty seventeen. And, you know, twenty thousand is not too much, that's what the grant is, we don't necessarily have to match it because our population isn't high enough. But we are planning on putting twenty to twenty-six thousand dollars of our own dollars towards it, so we can get a really good comprehensive update to that plan and keep it in line with the updates we've done to both the comp plan and the downtown plan that, you know, you'll be seeing this evening, so. We'll turn that in tomorrow, I think we'll know pretty quickly whether or not we get it, and then that plan update will have to be done by September of next year. So this is one we're going for, we think we have a really good shot at it, and you know, it'll help update one of our now older plans that we have since we've updated these two. And I've got, I think this is my last one, but town hall repairs and rehab are now done. We ran into some issues when the masons got to the roof to reinstall the brick stacked parapets. That's gonna have to be its own project, so they took off one of the metal caps. There was a lot more things going on under there than we had suspected, so it was no longer gonna be a forty-one thousand dollar project, so. We decided to hold off on that and just do the re-tuck pointing and the limestone sill cleaning, which has turned out beautifully. It'll help keep the building preserved for another, you know, fifty years, unless there's immense damage done in some other way. And we'll look at potentially being able to, you know, do an entire roof rehabilitation with the brick stacks, but basically it could not be done unless we completely redid the roof, and we weren't quite ready to do that yet. But other than that, it's done, and I'm just waiting on the final invoice for it. Next slide, please. Okay, yeah, this is my last one, so our US thirty-six reroute Water Street intersection study, CDM Smith is doing this with us with MCAG. And we had a meeting on the twenty eighth as well, they're collecting traffic data, environmental data, they're talking to property owners in the project area, got a lot of really good positive feedback, and we're looking to or is it the next month or so, start looking at alternatives, I think, okay. For alternatives, that'll be coming up here soon, so that's moving along swimmingly, it's great. I'm sure we're all aware that Water Street is not the greatest intersection in the world. So this is where kind of those changing projects start, is with like a report study, so. Any questions for me?
Well, just a point of note, I guess, last night when we had C of South Madison, we had that board that showed the state of town hall even before we did the windows and then, and it was, it really is transformative to see those windows be uncovered that had previously been covered by brick.
Yeah.
I think it's a project that turned out really nice, it would have been great to get those parapits done.
I know.
But not worth sacrificing being able to get it all done and get it done appropriately.
Right.
But just uncovering the windows is a huge, beautiful education project that I think is really nice.
And I think this being a cornerstone building as well, I mean, it was just nine windows, but it's amazing what, you know, nine windows can make such a difference in how this building looks.
Yes, for sure.
Yeah, it was a wonderful project.
Yeah, anything else for Hannah Rose?
Keep up the good work, guys.
Thank you.
Good luck on the grant.
Yeah.
I, I think. Putting it out there, we're gonna get this one, putting it out there. Good evening. My first project on the list here is Falls Park Drive Reconstruction Project, that is a part of our Community Crossings Matching Grant for twenty-six. So as you know, they kind of revamped that program this past year, things got put on hold, so everyone was ready to come out of the gate here in October to apply for the grant. So this is a one million dollar grant, we went for a hundred percent of all those dollars, adding in our ineligible items, addition to other fees, we're looking at a one point four million dollar project. So this is going to be an improvement when we get awarded this grant, it's an eighty, twenty percent grant here. But it runs from North Pendleton Avenue all the way to the west end, yeah, we've got the image here in the rendering, to the west end of the historical bridge there on Huntsville Road. You'll see that segment in green, the reason why is because of our NDOT certified road mileage, it's still tagged as Huntsville Road from the bisect onto the east. But if you recall, a couple of years ago, I think it was in twenty-three, we worked with Midwest Painting to improve from that green point all the way out to the sports complex and to Market Street there. But there's gonna be a variety of things going on to really improve the pedestrian safety and the traffic flow for that area. We'll have the overlay with some heavy patching. This was a top priority because this road is greatly deteriorated over the last couple of years, and as you know, it's heavily traffic. We've got a lot of visitors that come, and so we want to make sure that we make this a priority project. A part of that, there's gonna be a lot of sidewalk improvements, additional new sidewalks, curb improvements, as well as some crosswalks, we've got five crosswalks to be able to make sure that things are stretched appropriately, things meet ADA compliance standards, and just improving that pedestrian safety overall. So we're looking forward to likely hearing here by the end of the year, if we get awarded this grant. And if we do, we'll be looking at going through bid really quick, they fast track that process, we have to have under contract, not only through the bid process contract with the contract, but then also an agreement with NDOT within three months versus the original four months that we've had for several years, so we're looking at construction would start sometime in the summer of twenty-six, so. Okay, the next project we have here is South Pendleton Avenue, Avenue and South Main Street. This is a right away acquisition project, so we're gonna talk about this a couple of times this evening, but to start, we wanted to introduce you to this project. This is a project that about a year ago, it was identified by our IMPA, we work and partner with them for our electric utility. But then also Craig Switzer, he is our electric department supervisor, and in looking at the capacity needs, we are growing vastly here on that south end, Hudson or Farm and so forth, so we're struggling to meet capacity there on that edge of town there on South Pendleton Avenue. And you'll see here in this drawing here about the section of improvement that IMPA needed to go in and needed to upgrade their power lines. So on those power lines would require a new pole that has to be beefier, taller, heavier duty pole, also a heavier wire. And so in looking into that project and knowing that those poles are gonna have to be removed and replaced anyway, with the great, good planning and forward thinking by our town manager, Scott Reske. He had seen in the growth in that area, there's a lot of traffic concern as well. So we have those safety concerns with a lot of traffic that is coming into town that when they come up to this wide, they just kind of shoot down that narrow main street, and it's caused a lot of concern on Main Street, which is already narrow today. So in knowing that that is coming down the pipeline and in the future that we're going to need to make improvements to both the roadway, and we'd also like to accommodate sidewalk pedestrian connectivity from the downtown to Hudson or Farms there. We needed to be able to increase that easement and that right away area. So in looking and having this area surveyed, we were looking at about point oh five to about two point two five acres across thirteen different parcels, eleven different property owners. But in needing to acquire that acquisition to be able to accommodate those road improvements and then that safety connectivity with those sidewalks in the future. So we have been kind of working with our consultant, Banning Engineering on this, also our agent of the town is Katie Rep. She is amazing, she's done a wonderful job in communicating with these property owners and getting this project started. So a little bit later on this evening, I will kind of pick back up and talk about those acquisition conversations. The next project we have is a pavement asset management plan, so this is an annual requirement that we have to do, we have to turn into LTAP, it's the Local Technical Assistance Program. And in order for us to be eligible for community crossings, we have to submit this report every year. But the kicker is every two years, we have to rate, a Pacer rating, every single road in our inventory. So that is our certified road mileage, which we've got about forty-eight miles. We're gonna increase that here this next year because we've accepted here this past month several mileage in roads. But this year and every year, on the first of December, we have to submit that to them. With it being every two years a rating, Scott Reske, Rick Boland, and also Jim Cook, they spent several days out in the car going road by road to be able to update those road ratings based on their condition, and those condition ratings help us identify what is priority for our next pavement project. But that was all collected, and then Zach Rayborn and I, we kind of worked together to update our spreadsheet, our inventory, and then I'm working on wrapping up the goals and measures and cost analysis that go a part of that supplemental. And so we will be wrapping that up here this next week and getting it submitted to the state. The next project is our lead service line inventory program. This program is just a response to that continuing effort by EPA to be able to eliminate lead lines across America. We have really worked hard to narrow those unknown properties with what we call those waterline materials that are left unknown on whether they are lead, galvanized PVC, copper, we have quite a variety. But in looking at it this past week, I was very pleasantly pleased that we have about twenty-three hundred water accounts. And of those twenty-three hundred, about a year ago, we had a thousand of them unknown. We are about two hundred and forty. So we have one individual that I would say that really needs to take all the credit, and that is Dustin Jones, if you do not know him. He was perfect for the job, perfect for the assignment, did a great job interacting with those in our community, going door to door and narrowing those down. Keep in mind though, he, what's that, I'm sorry? He did, he loved doing it. Yes, I think, yes, we grow, become to where we're mayor, he will be a great candidate for that, so. But yes, he would come in each day telling us stories and relationships that he got to build over the time, so. He was very instrumental in this process. That being said, he was eliminating those unknowns on the private side, so just keep in mind, private side is from your premise to your meter. We also have to eliminate the public side, so that's the meter to the water main. And so until those are all completely identified, we have to continue our annual public notification letter, so. That is just required by law, and just, just know that here in the next coming weeks, those are gonna start to kick out, so. But yeah, very excited with the progress in the spring, the water department, and even a little bit in the winter, weather permitting, it's gonna start doing pop polling that will help identify those materials in those water pits. Over time, that soil, all that stuff kind of just builds up, and you can't easily just pop up the seal and see what those materials are. They're gonna be working on that, and then also in the springtime, those two hundred and forty homes, a lot of those is because they work during the day. So we're gonna get a crew out there in evenings, weekends, and just get, get those covered and get those knocked out. Hey, the next one is the tree inventory, just wrapping up the year, plant growth management and Tree Core, they've done a great job, they're very efficient. I don't know how many compliments I've received from Tree Core or for Tree Core and Plant Growth Management partnering with them. Over the past year, they have assessed about four hundred and fifty trees, so they identify any weakness or needs for maintenance, they relay that to either Rick Boland or myself. We get those kind of knocked out as best as we can, and all together, up to date, they have trimmed about two hundred and fifty trees, and then they have removed about eighty-five trees that needed to be removed. The next project is our placemaking advisory committee, I just wanted to get a good plug in here for them. They spend a lot of time really beautifying our community, and they're behind the scenes, you don't, you know, they don't get, I think, the credit, I'd say that, they, I know everyone appreciates them, but I just wanted to bring attention, you know, our gratefulness for all the time and the commitment and the hard work and the creativity that they bring to this community. They do the window storefronts out here, they help with the flower pots within the downtown, they helped out with the foundation and Lisa Floyd, which I'll be talking about here in a moment. But beautiful flowers that we have from spring until fall, and then we remove those, and then we put in the greenery for the winter season, so. They really work hard, and they also helped out with the downtown cleanup days here the last month. And just having them, seeing their excitement, they're very positive, and even in several occasions, they are expending their own dollars for this town. So cannot thank them enough, that Sandy Butler, Helen Reske, Brenda Daughery, Amber Hudson, Scott Stottlemyre, Colette Cunningham, and Janet Isbell, so. Really appreciate them, but then I also want to include Lisa Floyd, if you don't know Lisa Floyd, please meet her, she is amazing individual, community member. She led the porch festivals that we had here on Broadway, she's done the alley, she's done events there, she's done Park Fest, and she also keeps our flowers beautiful, so. Thank you Lisa Floyd for everything you do. Main Street Pendleton, the next program, this is a program that the town is very fortunate to have a partnership with. They really, their main goal and objective is to support our downtown and that business community. And so we, because of that relationship, are eligible for grant dollars, so it's very important that we preserve that relationship and keep that growing and building. This is, this group has been very busy over the last couple of months. They had Fall Festival in September, and then they turned around this past Saturday at Christmas in Pendleton. So just kind of wanted to give some shout out numbers for them, they had over a hundred and seventy vendors, they had eight hundred, or eighty-three hundred attendees. That's adults only, that doesn't account the children, so you could probably safely say well over ten thousand attendees for a one day event, it's pretty phenomenal. There are several great family friendly activities, there was a kids zone, a tree lighting ceremony, and one of the most fantastic parades I've seen lit in the night, and we have our very own leader. She was the grand marshal for that, so it was a very special day in Pendleton, we all have a lot of fun. Also, they've been busy with some ribbon cutting ceremonies here in the downtown. They have funded our, in part, our Arts and Culture Plan that is gonna start here in twenty twenty-six. And they are working hard, they're getting ready for the next year, that one of the big goals is, is board development and entry. So those are some of those key things that we're gonna be working with them on. Georgia, just wanted to give a little bit of an update, that got activated on the seventeenth of October. Since then, we've had the porch fest on Broadway, as well as Christmas in Pendleton, and we came through with not any real issues, everyone was, you know, very responsible, really enjoyed the program. It's been a positive experience and asset, I think, to our community, so thank you very much for enacting that, getting that in place. We have learned some things, and we're gonna, you know, kind of dive into that in twenty twenty-six and see how, what we can do to make some improvements. And looking into some warmer cups that we can have for some wintery events, so. And then I know that Sherri mentioned this earlier, my last slide is our Now Entering Pendleton. Please do come out, it's free to attend, but they do ask you to register, you can go on the page of our homepage of our town website. We have our newsletter, the link is in, in there, it opens, the doors open at six fifteen, and then seven o'clock to eight o'clock is a program. We're going to be able to watch a thirty minute video of highlights showcasing our community, and then we'll have a panel session after that, so please come and join us, we'd love to have you come.
Any questions for Denise, she covered a ton of territory.
Do you know Denise, I just wanted to say, the people volunteering this town is unbelievable.
Yes.
I mean, those organizations, those people that get out there, I'm downtown, I see it, hats off to all them people.
Yes, we're very fortunate.
Yeah, they spend a lot of time doing that, they're great, I mean, it's, I don't think we'd be what we are without people like that.
Yeah.
Thank them so much.
Yes, I agree.
And one other, like, fact, like, if you wanna like talk about numbers, I know Denise shared the data regarding total attendees, but last night, I talked to Jerry Wymer and Sharon Wymer from Artist Society, they actually clipped how many people came into the Artist Society on Saturday for Christmas in Pendleton, it was over seventeen hundred. So that's a huge number, when you think about the space that's over there, to have seventeen hundred people come through, that's, that's a lot. And, and one thing that Denise didn't mention regarding those events was hats off to all of our municipal employees for helping you all, since I'm sure Scott's gonna talk about in his report, but I mean, it's all hands on deck on those weekends, but I think it shows that, you know, the cohesiveness of all of our teams when we were able to pull it off, so. Anything else for Denise?
Thank you.
Scott?
Well, that's a good cue. So the first, first thing I wanted to talk about is how wonderful our guys did, and girls getting ready for Christmas at Pendleton. I think they like doing it, right, that's what the cool part is, that they just, they worked late, they were out close to probably midnight cleaning up after it was all done, in the rain, right, and pumped up rain. So from our standpoint, went really, really well. I got to do something unusual, I think, I hope it ends up being an annual event, I got to be a practitioner lecturer at IES Master's of Public Administration Program. It's held down in Crane for federal employees, they do all sorts of case studies, they did case studies on TIF, and so when I came in and talked about how we're being innovated with TIF, the professor who I used to work for a few years ago at the Department of Education, he was just amazed at how progressive the town is and innovative in putting out leadership and ideas to the rest of the communities. In other words, we're good groundbreakers. So that was sort of an honor for the town, that they wanted to hear from one of us on how we're doing. How we're being in a situation that's very unique, and that's in a, in a high growth situation. Also, I think it was important that they, they hear about people who are, you know, on, in the arena right now. Another thing is, Marissa did a great job at the state of Madison County representing the town, that went really well, we had fun at the lunch, the rest of us sitting at the table and. We had fun at the lunch, the rest of us sitting at the table and, and, um, we're proud of your presentation. And then the planning staff and Marissa did the state of Madison County this week, of South Madison County this week also. Um, just so you might not know, I put this on here, White River Alliance. They are a consortium that works with all the communities along the White River, including ours for the Fall Parade. That was basically, I think, the history on that. It started with, uh, fish kill and a lot of pressure from, uh, the White River for communities to meet their, uh, requirements for stormwater quality. Um, so they've increased their, um, dues a little bit, but it's still a great, uh, bang for the buck. Uh, they take care of a lot of the requirements that we have for community education, uh, on the dangers of, um, of letting bad things go down the drains. And so they help us keep our, um, our, uh, stormwater permit. Um, another thing, if we could go down to the photos, go to, go one more. Um, forgot to mention this one. The Daughters of American Revolution, uh, dedicated a liberty tree. It looks like the guy's trying to, it looks, he's trying to, I put that photo in there for the, uh, funny. It looks like he's trying to burn the tree down. He's actually, yeah, perspective, he's on the other side of it. It was, it was pretty neat. No, that's not me in the red. Charge, charge. So, um, that was interesting to learn the history of Liberty Tree. They used to, in Boston, was it? They would, they have that dome tree and they would put secret notes in it for the, uh, Patriots. Get the word out when they're getting ready to fight the British. Okay, if you could go back up to that first one. Yeah. So one of the things we're gonna do, this is gonna be, uh, another little pilot project and then we hope it goes well and we'll do it for the rest of the, uh, alley aprons and some of the street aprons that come onto Broadway. That is brick underneath the asphalt, all the way up past the sidewalk. And so, working with Ricky and trying to figure out how we could make that very bumpy, um, crossing smoother. What we're gonna do is we're gonna pull out the brick that would be underneath where the sidewalk is. We're gonna pour a new sidewalk. We'll go back a few panels each side, pour a new sidewalk, salvage the bricks that would be underneath it. Pull up the asphalt between that new sidewalk and the, and the, and the Broadway. And then relay those bricks so that it's smoother. In this case, there was a water line that runs down and the, uh, water department didn't put the bricks back, which is a habit. We're gonna try and break and always replace the bricks now. So hopefully that'll be a nice crossing. It'll be a smooth crossing. And then, um, but yet we're gonna, the movement to move more, back to more brick streets. This will be just a little, um, project. And as you can imagine, there are several of these going down, going down Broadway. Uh, so hopefully that's successful and, um, it's a tight, nice little pilot project for our guys to get back used to, uh, putting down brick. It's a lost art. Um, go to the photo. Yeah. So the Thomas Pendleton House, Elm Street, Main Street Project. That was, this photo was taken today. They milled yesterday and tomorrow they're gonna pave on Main Street. So you'll see that. Um, Elm Street has quite a bit of work to do. Remember, we had a problem with Frontier. Didn't pull out their utilities. They had a major underground, uh, utility manhole. Um, they were two months behind and that put this whole project behind over two months plus. Um, they hope to actually have this, uh, paved, the Elm Street part paved, uh, sometime this winter. If we have some, uh, warm, warm days during, uh, during the winter months. If not, we'll, we'll bump to the spring. But you can see how the sidewalks are going in. You may get questions. Why is this street so narrow? It's intended to be narrow because we don't want it to be, come a, uh, fast shortcut for people to get over to Pendleton Avenue. It's, each lane will be nine feet wide, which is wide enough. Um, but yet you won't have this sensation that you can, it's a street quieting program, traffic quieting program. Um, and so just the way this is construct, constructed with the, the narrow lanes. It's intended for traffic to be very slow going down there and it's to, to almost feel like a trail. And then of course, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna brick it after, um, the town finishes up with, and that's part of the project.
Scott, why did they bump the curb out right there in that area, out into the street?
Okay, so back and forth, a lot of it, there was a lot of things we had to satisfy. Um, first of all, um, taking care of the ramp requirements, ADA coming out of the tent, Thomas Pendleton House, giving them enough room. So the sidewalk, um, as you can see, it, it, it comes farther out than it was. All right. Another thing that's gonna happen is that eventually we'll only have parking on one side. And so the bump out does a couple of things. It calms traffic down because Main Street is getting, the average traffic speed there is just getting faster and faster and faster. Um, if you sit there long enough, not during construction, you will see somebody go by at fifty miles an hour. And I am not, I'm not kidding. It's, talk to our street guys. It's horrifying what happens on that street. And so this is a, uh, another traffic calming measure. Plus it'll be a major pedestrian crossing, especially looking at the Business Park Trail because Main Street will be part of that. And then addition, in addition also, it's gonna, uh, move traffic, um, part of, part of one of the problems, it sounds simple, but we spent how much time talking about it? Is where the center line of the road was gonna go and where it exists now. And, um, so the intention of that is to keep the center line where it is, but yet eliminate the parking, but keep traffic. Or towards the, the current.
So once you do away with parking on one side of the street there, I mean, it's gonna make it better for two cars side by side going.
Yeah, but we can't, the stretch that we're not paving, that'll stay, um, parking on both sides until the Business Park Trail. Because to get rid of that striping, that is thermoplastic striping. And if we pull it up and scar it, you have to literally grind into the asphalt. You might as well not do it until you are ready to repave. And we'll repave with the Business Park Trail. And then that'll be the, the next phase of converting that to just parking on one side, Main Street parking on one side. That makes sense.
Yeah, because I, I've had certain people ask me, why did they bump the curb out?
Yeah, well, at least you're not gonna hit the pole now.
Yeah.
Now the curb is there, the pole is protected.
And in front of that, that, uh, power pole, there, there'll be, we're gonna put some ballards in. It'll be striped, heavily striped to get the traffic over.
What about the six-foot fire hydrant?
It'll be kept out of the side. Um, so we just talked about, uh, Elm Street, Main Street. So we can go to the next slide. Uh, North Heritage Way Construction, that phase is done. They finished that out. Uh, they'll look at, uh, putting the final layer on, um, after the, after the winter. It's the top coat. There really shouldn't be any traffic on that and we're not gonna finish, um, striping it until we're, of course, ready for that. So that was, that was, that project went well, I think. Next slide, Hardy Drain Project. Um, this is the year of delays. We have, we have to de-water. Um, as you remember, and because we had to de-water, then we had to get a new window from CX, uh, CSX to be able to bore underneath the railroad tracks. They're starting the, the de-watering process now. They've started doing some work out there and then they'll probably be, um, pumping those wells full blast, um, early next week. Um, and hopefully that goes well. Um, next, next project. And then we talked a little bit, uh, the long-range, like the capital project. It is still under, uh, design as we, as we talk. We've gotten, we've asked for a couple bids on some parts. I'm not talking about the million and a half dollar transformer we had five, but some other parts that are of significant cost too. We got some bids that came in and they came in too high and the timeline to get them is a year. And so we're gonna look at the, if engineers are going back and looking at, uh, doing an alternative design, which will, and, and using an alternative that may, that should, we should be able to get the parts in faster and, um, save about fifty percent.
Any questions for Scott?
Thanks, Scott.
Okay, moving on to old business ordinance, twenty twenty-five dash twenty-nine, employee handbook acceptance. Um, if you remember last month, this received, um, its first read. And, um, Karen, Dawn, Scott, myself, as well as our, um, consultant with New Focus HR have been working on this for the better part of all of this year. Um, and so we are excited to roll that out soon and have it effective to everyone. Uh, any questions regarding this ordinance? If there aren't any questions, let entertain a motion for second read.
Make the motion.
I have a motion and a second for acceptance of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty-nine, employee handbook acceptance on second read. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to new business, um, resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirteen, approving the twenty twenty-five comprehensive plan. And then do you guys wanna talk about downtown also in the same vein as this?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're also gonna talk about resolution twenty twenty-five dash fourteen, approving the twenty twenty-five downtown revitalization plan. So do you wanna turn over to Rachel to staff?
Well, I'll just, first of all, introduce.
Yeah.
Rachel. Um, so we have Rachel Christensen. Um, she is not only a community member, but she is our consultant, uh, lead on this project. Um, Rachel and her team, uh, with HWC Engineering, uh, had Haley, had Genevieve and then even Brian was in here for several recessions. But, uh, she really led a great team in, uh, guiding us through this process. Uh, it was a wonderful streamlined process that we had two, uh, planning documents that were updated over the course of the last ten months. Our comprehensive plan, which was a twenty eighteen document, our downtown revitalization plan, which is a twenty fifteen document. And so in trying to be mindful of everyone's time and busy schedules, we then collaborated. There were separate steering committee, um, meetings and groups, uh, assigned for each of these projects. Um, but we had about four or five different steering committees over the course of the last ten months. We also had focus groups. We had stakeholder meetings, uh, to where we gathered input and feedback from them. We had a public workshop sometime, I think in February. And then we ended up going and had our big ideas open house. That was in June at the Community Sports and Wellness Center, which was a wonderful night. We had a great turnout. And throughout that whole process, we also had a website, uh, that HWC had created for us and had public surveys and a lot of different variety of ways in which our, the voices and the feedback from our community was gathered and captured and evident and portrayed in these two updates and these planning documents. Um, I think speaking on behalf of our planning department, Hannah Rose and Connor, we really feel like this mirrors an alliance with our community's desires and needs and they couldn't have done a better job. So, um, both of these documents have been fully vetted through those, uh, groups and committee members, uh, reviews. Also went through Plan Commission. We had those presented at our October Plan Commission. Uh, the comprehensive plan was given a favorable recommendation at the October meeting. Uh, but then after further discussion with the downtown revitalization plan, there was strong interest and I think that they made the right choice is in having the downtown revitalization plan as an addendum to our comprehensive plan. So it's kinda like an appendix to our comprehensive plan, which gives us a little bit more teeth and a little bit more grit to be able to, um, enact those actions and those goals and, and steps that we set forth, um, um, i- in those plans. So what we did was, is that we, in making that change, we needed to go ahead and re-submit a new public notice for that. So then at our last week's Plan Commission meeting, we then had the adoption as far as a favorable recommendation for downtown revitalization plan. So they're both coming together tonight, uh, for your, uh, uh, consideration. Uh, as staff, we recommend that they are ready to go. Um, we felt like they really did a lot of, uh, due diligence and spent a lot of hard work and time, uh, to reflect our community and where we see our future, um, going forward. So, that being said, Rachel, I don't know if you have anything you want to add, but, uh, again, thank you. Thank you so much.
I don't have a lot. Denise kinda went over all the parts and pieces that go along with the comp plan and the downtown plan. I think just maybe more on a personal note, just saying thank you for having me back to work on these documents. Really very cool to go through it the first time when we did it back in two thousand and eighteen and fifteen. Uh, and to come back and be able to do like the second layer of updating on those and see how far we've come as. Put things into place that are gonna happen in the next ten years. So it's just really exciting. So, uh, obviously I love this little town. Um, it was a hard decision when I decided to leave, um, as an employee, but obviously still live here and very invested in it. And I just think that's like the greatest compliment that you guys would hire me back to continue doing planning work for you. So, thank you. Um, and I think another small personal note, just, you know, I think being here at Pendleton for the time that I was like really helped me be a better planner in my career now and being able to go out into other communities and see the cool things that they're doing and help them is, is really great. And I wouldn't be as good of a planner as I am had I not had this time at Pendleton. So, thank you guys for that. Um, I think, what else? Um. Comp plan, um, just to be able to build off of that twenty eighteen plan, uh, one thing that your staff is doing that's super cool. I love that they're taking those strategies and putting them in your staff reports, um, directly from the comp plan. I think that's fantastic to kinda show the public too, like what you're actually doing, uh, to enact those strategies that the comp plan put into place. So, uh, I thought that was really neat. Um, the down, the comp plan and the downtown plan obviously are very much aligned. Um, I think like Denise said, having the downtown plan be an amendment to the comp plan is very smart. Um, and then if you guys are doing other updates, like the bike ped plan, doing that in a similar way, I think would be really wise moving forward. So, um, I think next steps for you guys after adopting this would be, you know, just making sure. I know you guys are doing a great job of keeping your unified development ordinance, um, in line. Uh, but just kinda maybe doing a review of that to make sure that what is put in the comp plan is being accurately reflected in the video. Cause that's how you get your comp plan actually built out. Um, and then the other part that is really interesting about this is the interchange master plan that Chris Ham's team with HWC is working on for you guys. Uh, I had a really great conversation with him last week. Uh, he's really excited about Pendleton. I think that's a huge compliment with him, you know, being, uh, staff at Noblesville for so long and kinda being the mastermind behind to exit two-ten. And, you know, for him to see that potential in Pendleton on a, a different scale, but, you know, somewhat, he's like, you guys are ten minutes down the road from this. Like capitalize on what that has, you know, is going on down there and, um, we'll have to grab coffee at some point to talk more about that. So, anyway, um, thanks again. And if you guys have any questions, I'm happy to answer them about either plan.
Any questions for Rachel or staff?
You know, Rachel, I, I studied this book pretty good today. Uh, one of the concerns I have is, is, of course, having a downtown business twenty-four years, the biggest complaint I've heard in twenty-four years is parking. I hear it constantly from people and I just wanna make sure we address the parking situation.
Yeah.
We've all talked about it over the years. What's the answer? You know, and, um, but I, I do hope that we address the parking, you know.
One of the recommendations that is in the downtown revitalization plan portion of this is to do a parking-related study. Um, you know, having parking being a complaint for downtowns is not unique to Pendleton by any means. That is like number one thing I hear about any community, um, with the downtown, um, is that parking is an issue. So I think getting some more data about what is actually going on, on the ground to say, to at least give you guys the tools to tell. You know, when you have people coming in that are complaining about parking, you can say, you'll have a good toolkit on or data on. Okay, this actually isn't a problem or this is what we are doing to address it. Um, and I think that would be helpful.
People are gonna come.
Oh, absolutely. Yes, yes. I mean, what, like, how many years ago was it that we tried to do two-hour parking? People lost their mind. So.
Twenty seventeen, twenty sixteen.
So, but I think doing a, a, an actual parking study to really look at what's going on that we can have some better, more solid recommendations that are based on data and not perceptions would be really important.
Okay. One thing that I talked about at state of Madison. One thing that I talked about at state of Madison County that I think is important to note about these. And I was on the focus group for the comprehensive plan or the steering committee for that. But even though we're using HWC, like these ideas and the energy to like put this forward is really driven by our citizens and our business owners and our building owners and all of these people who have roots here. And so yes, HWC ties it up and gives us kind of best practices and and helps us with like the language and and doing those things. The meat and potatoes of it is from us here in the community. And I know Denise talks about that for a minute before when we were introducing Rachel, but I'm extremely proud of these documents. I think that it's a testament to the commitment of our citizens who were on these committees and saw the project through. And also HWC being able to take, you know, kind of these random unrelated fragments and synthesize them into a cohesive document. I think they're, they're excellent, but that's just my opinion.
And I loved bringing my team here and they were like, people are showing up for meetings, you know? I mean, just the way that our town shows up is so like, it makes me really proud of us. And that's was nice to like have, you know, my group, my new group come in and be really impressed with us. I mean, I wasn't shocked. I was like, yeah, this is how it is.
Yeah. Any other questions for Rachel or staff regarding either the downtown revitalization or the comprehensive plan? And also just FYI, for anybody who's not super familiar with these documents, both of these documents were sunsetting. And so it was time to redo them and best practices being that we get them done. So without further ado, I will entertain a motion for approval of resolution twenty twenty five dash thirteen approving the twenty twenty five comprehensive plan update.
Make the motion.
I'll say it.
I have a motion and a second for approval on first read, because there's only one read for a resolution, right? Okay, approval of resolution twenty twenty five dash thirteen approving the twenty twenty five comprehensive plan update. All in favor signify by saying aye, aye, opposed, motion carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to resolution twenty twenty five dash fourteen. Is there anything you want to add about the downtown one specifically before we go into that resolution?
Yeah.
No, okay. Moving on to this, go ahead.
Yes, I'm saying the downtown plan, I think, is a little visionary. So if you do get questions or pushback on it at all, I mean, we haven't. I mean, I think we've done a good job of like communicating it to the public, but still sometimes you feel looked at plans and they're like, one of the things we got a feedback was like, we're going to bulldoze downtown or parts of the downtown. And so the parts that we are looking at for redevelopment are not areas that are contributing to like the National Register District or anything like these are the things that don't have that uniqueness about them or that history to them that, you know, we could do better and have more things that are higher and better uses for the downtown. So that was just one thing I think we kind of heard at the end that I wanted to point out.
And I think the plan did a wonderful job of that infill development of where we have those areas that, you know, can. And yes, exactly, and activate these spaces. And then there is even a parking garage, it's a two level, but then also had that gathering space amenity to it. So that was, yeah, very well.
Awesome. Okay, moving on to resolution twenty twenty five dash fourteen approving the twenty twenty five downtown revitalization plan. Do I have a motion for approval? I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Seconds.
I have a motion and a second for approval of resolution twenty twenty five dash fourteen. All in favor signify by saying aye, aye, opposed, motion carried unanimously. Thank you to planning staff for seeing this project through. Thank you to HWC for seeing this project through. Ten months is a long time. It's kind of like, you know, we feel very proud that we checked this off the list because this was a big undertaking for our staff and HWC. So thank you. Okay, moving on to resolution twenty twenty five dash fifteen approving the Fall Creek Regional Waste Disconnect Agreement. Scott, I'll let you talk about this because it went through Water Works Committee and received a favorable recommendation last night, and you are the staff liaison for that.
So this is an idea that came from Fall Creek Regional Waste District. And basically when they have to do a shut off and believe me, they, this is the last resort. There's a lot of processes and it's very rare for them to have to shut off a customer. So the idea is instead of digging up in the right way or digging up in the street or digging up in the yard to do a shut off, and then of course, if they pay the bill, then then the reverse happens, right? You gotta go and reconnect it. So the idea is to shut off the water. Donnie brought up, Donny Myers brought up a good point yesterday. He liked it immensely. From his time as a water treatment plant operator is you got a problem if you don't shut off the water when you shut off the sewer anyway, because if you keep flowing the water, eventually that's going to back up, then you have a sanitary problem. And from the customer standpoint, they have to pay to get rehooked up. They have to pay for all that machinery, time, material and damages if it's done to a street sidewalk or right away. So in some ways it's a, it's a win-win for everybody. They do, we will be paid seventy five thousand or seventy five. Oh, I wish that was true. Yeah, I was thinking zeros, right? Seven five zero, seven five point zero zero, seventy five dollars. Every time we, if we do this, we don't expect it to happen more than single digits per year. And then the biggest concern like that I had is are we protected from law through because we're turning off water when it's a sanitary sewer issue? Dinsmore assures us that the protections are in there in case, so the Fall Creek Regional Waste District takes on the full line. That's the way to say that. Anyway, that's the, the idea and Water Works liked it.
Any questions for Scott regarding resolution twenty twenty five?
And you know, we, last thing Scott, in that meeting, we talked about, you know, you, we're not going to run out and shut you off, you know, immediately. You're going to have some chances to pay that, but you've got to pay it eventually or else we are going to shut you off. Yeah.
Yeah.
But the reconnect being so much less for the consumer to the seventy five dollar reconnect fee pales in comparison to them having to repair and pay back the labor and all of those things. So while it doesn't feel on its face like a warm fussy thing to be talking about, it really does. People who would be in a dicey economic situation, they would have an easier pathway forward to get reconnected to that service using this model versus.
Yes, yeah.
Not so.
And I was a skeptic at first and and I was eventually won over. It's less traumatic for everybody. I think it's the best way to summarize it.
Yeah. Any other questions regarding resolution twenty twenty five dash fifteen? Okay, if there aren't any questions, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for approval of resolution twenty twenty five dash fifteen approving the Fall Creek Regional Waste District Disconnect Agreement. All in favor signify by saying aye, aye, opposed, motion carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to resolution twenty twenty five dash sixteen memorandum of understanding interlocal agreement with the Elwood Court. You may remember back close to two years ago, we abolished our town court with the intent that another municipality would take on our local ordinance violations and tickets. And we are finally getting to the point to memorialize that so that we have the correct pathway forward so that these local ordinance violations can be heard at the Elwood City Court. Brian has worked with Judge Noon on this, who is the judge in Elwood. And Brian, anything you want to add regarding this?
No, thanks to Rob for getting this done. I forwarded on to Judge Noon earlier today and he took a look at it and said, looks great to him. So once we approve it, he's going to submit it to his elder council.
Perfect. Any questions regarding what this mechanism does or anything like that? This is long overdue to get this done. We've been writing our tickets under state code violations, correct, instead of local ordinance? And so and Elwood has assured us that they're going to work with us as closely as they can as far as scheduling and making things not feel like we're constantly going to Elwood. So. Great. Okay, any other comments regarding twenty twenty five dash sixteen? Okay, then I'll entertain a motion for approval. I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a motion and a second for approval of resolution twenty twenty five dash sixteen memorandum of understanding interlocal agreement with the Elwood City Court. All in favor signify by saying aye, aye, opposed, motion carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to resolution twenty twenty five dash seventeen, the Serenity Development Colcarney Water Main Reimbursement. I will let Denise or Scott, whichever one of you want to talk about that. As Scott mentioned earlier, the North Headway extension is finished and this is a part of that.
So let's talk big picture first, just a reminder of how important the waterline extension statutes is going to be for us. Since we are a community that is growing and developers are looking this way, that means they're going to have to extend water lines out to their development. We don't want to be caught with that bill. We would like developers to do that as much as possible. This makes this waterline extension statutes and rules make it easier for them to be reimbursed if they're the first or second developer to go into an area that main has to be extended out to their development. And in the past, what would happen, then other developers would come along and they would have the advantage that main already being extended out into their area. And so what it allows is the initial developers that put in a main to be reimbursed for their expenses within, they have a ten year window to do that. So this is our first true project where there was a water main extension where the developer wanted to make sure that things were in place legally so that if other development happened, which probably it will, could distort their image way. Anybody else connecting to the mains they're putting in, and that could be a third party that buys off of them or a field available that develops, it will allow them to be reimbursed. This is our first one. So there was a lot of back and forth with Dinsmore because we wanted it to also be our template going forward. So we wanted to make sure we didn't just slap something together and Dinsmore was very. Thorough was the best word he used. Yes, and and we learned a lot as staff on how this works because going forward, we realize that we are going to have to do a lot of this over the years. So this is for that project and it's specific. You know, I talked about it in general at first, this is a first for a specific project. Thing else you think we ought to add? It's for the phase one, it's for phase one.
Lots one and two.
Yeah, there's a main that, there we go. We have our pointers working just real quick, stand in the middle so you don't have anyone to learn from.
I was getting ready.
So the water main, that's the roundabout, the north south road is of course State Street to north of that Wolf East. The main that they put in, it's already put in, goes along the north south leg right here. Oh, and that drawing, it's called Shrew Way, but it's Rose Gate. Right?
Any questions for Scott regarding this?
And we did approve this last night to one person, maybe. Yeah, okay, thank you. Good, good point, good point.
We had engineers that did a verification on the cost analysis, you know, on that improvement. And then each of those lots, when they then take a building permit and they want to connect to that water, then they have to pay that subsequent connector fee. So it's based on program share of that total cost based on their linear footage of their property.
Any questions? Okay, then I'll entertain a motion of approval for approval of resolution twenty twenty five dash seventeen.
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for approval of resolution twenty twenty five dash seventeen, Serenity Development Colcarney Water Main Reimbursement. All in favor signify by saying aye, aye, opposed, motion carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to the memorandum of understanding for the I sixty nine corridor plan with the Madison County Council of Governments. This has been moving around for quite a while in the shadows.
Pull back about a year ago, but yeah, so this interlocal agreement, it was a plan that was developed led by Madison County Council of Governments. There was a steering committee of the communities, including Madison County, City of Anderson, Town of Pendleton, Town of Eagles and Town of Lappel, as well as NDOT that was involved with this process as well. So this was the plan of development that is established for the corridor of I sixty nine from exit two fourteen all the way to exit two twenty six. So any development that then comes off a mile on each way, direction, is kind of involved or impacted by those additional standards that this document kind of identified. It helps guide transportation and planning improvements and developments. And those standards are such things like road design, landscaping, signage, sense of place, land use and economic development kind of in that corridor area. One of the key things about this agreement is, is that should say the Town of Pendleton have a development that then comes up right off of the interstate then, when we get those site development plans or plating processes or whatever those documents, we then agree with going under this MOU that we're going to share that with our neighboring communities. And then that way that we're all kind of on the same page and that not every community is going to form and develop, you know, identically and that they're going to have, but we want some uniformity, you know, in that corridor. And just building those relationships and the conversations between all of our communities, I think across the region that is going to, to be, you know, a great thing for us moving forward. So what had happened was is that we all kind of went through steering committee, went through the process. They approved this plan, it got approved by the board, then we were ready for step two. So in October twenty twenty four, Ralph and his team came here from MCOG to present this plan. Then when it came to then kind of finalizing the MOU and for the different communities to review, we were partnered with Dinsmore. Dinsmore, I will say that word again, thorough, very thorough and attentive to detail. They do a great job of making sure that our interests, our rights are protected. And so what they did over the last few months is they worked with that document to embed those protections and those clarifications. A few of the changes of that agreement that they had recommended and an agreement by Madison County Council of Governments and other communities, they added a ten year expiration date. There is no expiration date to this plan at all. Also waiver of claim of breach or default, also to provide a right to withdrawal from the MOU. And if any community decided it just was in their best interest to still continue to participate, the rest of it stayed remaining. And that was a mechanism that we wanted to make sure stayed in place. And then also established that it was not a legally binding document. It did not create any legal obligation or liability. So in working a revision of that, then we kicked that back out to Madison County Council of Governments. They were in full support of that modification. We've had one other community, which is the Town of Lappel that has already signed. They also agreed with the change. So that being said, your, the document, full document and the plan is in your team's drive, but the updated MOU is also there and we recommend a consideration for approval.
Can I say a couple things, big picture? So we went to the AM conference Denise and I did, and Eagles was there in Lappel. And there was a couple of seminars on regional innovation, in other words cooperating. And of course, the big nightmare is you have two roads that were spending this much money on a road. They spent this much money on a road, our neighbors and then it's up being like this, right? That's everybody's nightmare. So I think you attended it, right? And I know some of the other people attended some of the seminars on big all regionalization. We were, we check, we're checking the blocks left and right. So and then also when I was down at IU at their MPA program, that was one thing they were really interested in the growth happening here. How are the small towns, they're really small right now, but you know, Eagles Pendleton, Lappel and Marcoville, how are you, how does that all work? We talked about it. So I think internally, we're pretty progressive and doing the best practices, but our neighbors and two of them have been doing the right thing. It's really important, makes life easier. You guys agree?
Yeah. And we have comfort that a lot of these standards, they either meet or even our UDO exceeds the standards that are outlined in this document. So we're really comfortable with all the standards that are in place, you know, for our developers that come in. And yes, I agree with Scott, you know, we're very excited about all the partnerships and the relationships that are forming across our county. The Madison County, the state of Madison County was a great program to be a part of and just to be able to see everyone wanting to come together into rallying behind each other in any effort that that comes our way is, it's been exciting. So, yeah.
Any questions regarding this? Like Denise mentioned, Ralph came and presented a year ago and we finally got this finished. So and really you're just authorizing me to sign this, correct? Isn't that what the idea is? So with that, I will entertain a motion for approval of the MOU I sixty nine corridor plan with MCOG. I have a motion and a second for approval of the MOU. All in favor signify by saying aye, aye, opposed, carried unanimously, and I will sign it after the meeting. Awesome. Okay, moving on to the South Pendleton Avenue, South Main Street right away acquisitions. We talked about this for a minute at the very beginning, but now Denise is going to give us a little bit more of an in-depth. the South Pendleton Avenue, South Main Street right away acquisitions. We talked about this for a minute at the very beginning, but now Denise is going to give us a little bit more of an in-depth view.
Um so just kind of a uh an update to kind of where we are as far as the land acquisition that we spoke about earlier this evening on this acquisition service project. Um in working with Kate Rep, she has had a conversation with eleven property owners. Uh two of those property owners have adjacent property parcels. So there's actually thirteen different parcels, but eleven property owners of which at this time she's been uh as far as after the appraisals were conducted. So she had conducted not only an appraisal, but then also a confirmed appraisal. Um so once that was all solidified and her packets kind of uh prepared and ready to go, she's been in conversation with these uh property owners since sometime in September. Uh since then, she has secured four out of the eleven. Uh so we have four of those property owners that have signed uh the settlement offer. Um at this point, those four total about thirty-eight thousand dollars, thirty-eight thousand one hundred. And uh they are ready, you know, to move forward, but we have a couple of steps that we need to take. So a part of that, your full packets are in the team's drive. Uh these here uh on display is kind of a consolidated of kind of four key um pieces to those packets uh um here uh in on on the the powers or the screen. Um but uh in able to move forward, we need to present this to you and it would take town council approval for us to be able to move forward with compensation of these uh slivers of land, uh land acquisition offer. Uh there are four parcels. One is at one oh four West Reformatory. The second one is seven eighteen South Pendleton Avenue. The third is six forty-two South Main Street, and then the fourth one is zero Pendleton Avenue. Um so they are all in agreement with the the offer. There was one that I think was about thirteen hundred dollars. They came back asked for um eighteen seventy-five because they're going to have to relocate and it impacted their um mailbox. Uh so we uh felt that that was appropriate. So that was adjusted a little bit. Uh we have ninety days from the date of approval on these letters to be able to get payment to them. If not, then those appraisals will have to go back and revisit. So um what uh as staff, we are asking is for your approval by motion. There's no resolution. It's just by motion uh to move forward or finalizing these sales transactions. Um we have in those packets, we have the sales disclosure form, the warranty deed, there's exhibits, there's a W nine for recording and then uh payment authorization. And um and also too, the second piece of that is we're asking uh to authorize the clerk treasurer to be able to sell, uh to sign this document. Uh once those are approved by town council, then signed by the clerk treasurer, then what our next step is planning department will record these with the Madison County Recorder's Office. We want to record them before we make payment because we want to make sure that all the documentation is set and ready to go before those payments are issued. Um so once they're signed and executed, we will get them recorded and then we will get them back up to the clerk's office for uh payment and then back out to the property owner. Uh um then if you have any questions, we can um answer. Anything?
One thing I failed to say is that this is out of electric money. So it's not tax dollars.
Yeah, with with the needing to upgrade those electric lines, uh we are going to have to remove and relocate those power lines anyway. Um this just allows us to be able to have a little bit more long-term um vision approach on this project than just kind of a short term and then we're back at square one, another five years, we'll make the improvements on the road. So.
And right now we're just approving the first.
The first four, yes. The first four are, have been accepted and secured. I think it's properties ones, five, nine and eleven. Put those packets up.
Of course, they weren't concentric, no, sorry, in order. Any questions for Denise regarding this or Scott?
Scott, the poles that they put in not long ago out there, we already have approval for that space that they're sitting on. Okay, and how far this is to eventually be like
Oh, the ones you're seeing, good, good point. Those are in where there was already existing right away.
Okay.
So we've not put in poles where there needs to be a purchase of running way. If you do go down that main street, you know, if you're driving a car, a bike or whatever, it feels more comfortable now that those poles are back. Yeah, so.
It's just one of those things where we need to have a uniform right away instead of having fifteen feet here, twenty feet here.
And that's kind of where this will kind of shore that up a little bit. Yeah.
And will it go all the way to my senior farm?
It goes to uh
It goes right before.
What's that first road?
I was wondering for Canterbury. A little bit, yeah, that, yeah.
The project, the last parcel is.
Um I think it hits right before uh is it Garcia or what's that road that off? Yeah, yeah, right before that road. But yeah, that is correct. Where the right away, the easement had already been established. You know, some of those parcels were right up to the edge of pavement or the center line. And so um so those areas um have already been moved back. Um but in the is kind of uh hands tied until we get through all of these acquisitions.
Any questions? Then I'll entertain a motion for approval of these right away acquisitions. I have a motion and a second for approval of the right of way acquisitions on South Nelson Avenue slash slash South Main Street. All in favor signify by saying aye, aye, opposed. Carry unanimously. Okay, moving on to the tax and grant financing budget, Scott.
Okay, so um there's a deadline on this. We have that submitted. And this is basically the RDC's budget. This is uh this page, as you can see here, the yellow is for the twenty-six year and this is a truncated version of our twenty-year plan. Uh the top shows what the revenue is and this will be updated by Dinsmore. Uh not Dinsmore, but REEDY. And then what our fixed payments are, which is basically the bond payments. And then the other expenditures are the amounts that uh projects like for example, they talked about the head plan, the archiculture plan. Those are items that are in there. Um and then also some other fixed costs such as legal um consulting. And then as I think the last time I looked, where the cash flow or the current fund balance for TIF RDC was right around hovering around a billion. So we've been building that up. Um this does not include any major projects. Um if we do do a major project through the RDC, then we'll come back and ask for um a separate appropriation of that.
Okay, any questions for Scott regarding this? Steve, this is the second time you've seen it. If there aren't any questions for Scott, I entertain a motion of approval for the TIF budget. I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second for approval of the TIF budget. All in favor signify by saying aye, aye, opposed. Motion carried unanimously. Okay, item I rescinding the burn ban. You'll remember about six weeks ago, we issued a burn ban because Madison County issued a burn ban. We had had extreme drought conditions. Um that is something that I think in the five years that I've been here, we've done emergencies for snow and ice and some foil ordinance or boil uh orders, but we've never done a burn ban. And uh so we got educated on that. And fun fact, if you are going to issue a burn ban, technically we have to meet to officially adopt the burn ban within so many days, correct? And then we also have to meet to rescind the burn ban. Uh and so even though the burn ban has expired, as the document stated, after seven days, we have to formally rescind the burn ban. Is that correct, Rob?
Uh yes, counsel, I would just say uh in with, in this case, being an emergency that was done on the weekend by the executive, so the president. In that case, by statute, the council in order to keep it going further with me to continue it, I think just as we were talking, just to clarify for the record, we just thought it appropriate to make it formal on a rescission. Uh you may recall, this was very prevalent during COVID. We saw it not only, you know, across the state and all the local communities, but across the country.
Any questions regarding rescinding the burn ban? Anybody opposed to rescinding the burn ban after it's been expired? Okay, then I'll.
Whoa, 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 one bit of information. I know you guys want to know this. Okay, there's a stipulation in the burn ban. If you have a steel ring that's four inches tall and twenty-three inches in diameter, you can have a spot.
What? Of course you would know this.
Uh.
Of course you would.
You really want to bend the rules.
Mine, mine is four foot diameter, about eighty inches deep. It's an old man old cover turned upside down.
There you go.
Yeah, but that.
Any additional feedback regarding the burn ban?
We call it no fire.
Yeah. Yeah. Uh okay, then I will entertain a motion for approval of rescinding the burn ban. I have a motion for rescinding the burn ban. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for rescinding the burn ban. All in favor signify by saying aye, aye. Burn ban has been rescinded. Okay. I know I didn't because I heard everyone clearly. Um any public comment?
How about burn pit?
What was that?
How about a bird in it?
Oh yeah, a burn pit. Well, apparently Willie has the stats for what it has to be. As long as it has a steel ring of four inches and it's twenty-three.
Burn ban is on. Normally there's rules.
Yeah.
You can have a brick with whatever. Yeah.
I mean, I mean the hole in the ground.
The hole in the ground.
Long as you're in it, dog.
Oh, geez, he's mean. Any other public comment today? Anybody on Zoom with or teams with any comments? Before we adjourn, I do want to just one more time say thank you to the Porch Music Festival Committee um as well as the Christmas in Pendleton, all of the hands that touched that event, which were many. Um it was a great day. Also, we've had several ribbon cuttings that are exciting and we love those days. Um one other point, which we will have another meeting before this, but one month from today on December the thirteenth is wreaths across America. It is my favorite frigid morning in Pendleton, uh where we will lay, I believe it's approximately four to six hundred wreaths uh at Groblon Cemetery and it's a very wonderful morning. Um if you have not purchased a wreath, you can, there are links on our Facebook page as well as the town's website um to do that. And we'll have more information as it gets closer to time about the procession for those wreaths as they come into town on the semis. Um if they're doing that again this year, um but just mark your calendars because if you've never been to the wreath laying ceremony, you you should go.
It's very moving.
It's very moving. And it's also always the coldest morning. Um but it's a good reminder of our veterans sacrifices. And so since we're on the heels of Veterans Day, we want to make sure that we acknowledge that that is coming up and it's wonderful morning. So um anything else for anybody up here? That wants to say anything? Okay, then I will make a motion to adjourn at seven twenty-three.